Welcome to the March 10, 2025 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We have an invocation offered by Commissioner Murray, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Well, the vernal equinox is still 10 days away, but yesterday's warmth and sunshine and the time change that left me going to bed too early and waking up too early got me thinking about that, and so I offer this invocation today. Waking us Lord from the quiet beauty and sacred stillness of winter, giving thanks for the solitude and reflection this season has provided. Guide our faces to the warmth of you and your bright sun dawning on the horizon. A new day you offer with the promise of hope, change, renewal, and rebirth. Help us to overcome doubt and fear of the future and replace it with steadfast responsibility and accountability to you and to each other for the collective choices made that have shaped our present. Prove us to step out of the darkness of division and into the light of solidarity, perfectly balanced between shadow and illumination, day and night, uncertainty and clarity, separation and unity. Train us to spot and cultivate the new sprouts of transformation we witness with the unyielding power of faith, trust, support, and encouragement. Teach us to nurture and grow the many and diverse people of Sandusky with a clear vision of the necessity and urgency of strong community, that is, common unity based in service to the greater good. Let us all live in gratitude for all that you have given us, all that we are and all that we are capable of becoming as we assist one another in thriving, not merely surviving. Finally, brand our hearts with the humility that we, as the elected and appointed representatives and employees of the City of Sandusky, are the imperfect vessels into which our neighbors have placed their trust and hope, and give us the wisdom and strength to honor you and then by honorably discharging our duties. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Myers, do you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bajali.
Here.
Mr. Coons.
Here.
Mr. Crable.
Here.
Ms. Vargo.
Here.
Mr. Wattington.
Here.
Commissioners, yeah, before the minutes of our meeting of February 24, 2025, what is it?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wattington.
Will we accept the minutes of the February 24 meeting as presented?
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, a motion will be approved in hearing, no objection, that motion. We have three public hearings this evening. Two of them are going to be conducted by our chief planner, Aaron Blair. The first is a zone map amendment for 1706 Hayes Avenue, and as this is a public hearing, we will entertain questions from both the audience and from the commission. At the conclusion of Ms. Blair's presentation, Ms. Blair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Brady, the zone map we have in front of us today is an initiation by recommendation of the Planning Commission for parcel 57-01278.000 to rezone the former American Crayon site from limited manufacturing zoning to public facilities, and that will enable the improvements that the city is currently undesigned for the recreation center and tennis courts. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended this rezoning at their regularly scheduled meeting on January 22, 2025.
That is very brief and very concise. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Questions or comments from the public regarding that specific topic?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Over the last couple of days, there was an article in the local newspaper. There's continued discussion, and it looks like it's pretty positive discussion as far as widening Route 4 to four lanes into Sandusky. And I personally, and there's other people in the community that I've talked with, and it's on social media, that the concern is, is that, once again, we're losing one more piece of prime manufacturing property, and I'm not talking about like a car manufacturer, but even light manufacturing would be great for that site, especially due to the fact that when the rec center issue first came about, there were other sites that were considered, and I know this is probably too late, 11th hour, but you do have the authority, by either passing or denying this, to maybe look at a different site for the recreation center. I don't think, I mean, I think we can still do that, so that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Additional comments from the public? Any comments from the commission? Comments or questions from the commission regarding this topic? I will declare this public hearing closed, and we'll go on to the public hearing number two, Ms. Blair.
Thank you, Commissioner President Brady. This is, it reads on the agenda, zone map. This is actually a zone text amendment. Just wanted to make that comment. And this is a proposed initiation of a change to the zoning code, Chapter 1147, Section 1147.02, to update the manufactured homes' design criteria minimum standards to include standards for the front elevation of new homes and allow for metal roofing material. We started having this conversation in Planning Commission because we expect manufacturing homes and this style and type of construction to become more popular. It is a very cost-efficient way of constructing homes, and we also have a significant number of vacant land area in the city that can see infill housing come into the city. When those homes are constructed, we'd love to see them fit within the character of the neighborhood that they're coming into, and Sandusky is a place that tends to have front porches and front doors, even though a lot of people also use their side entrances. Currently, there are a number of design guidelines, design standards, excuse me, in the code, and the front elevation, there's nothing on that currently, and this is to bring forward that the front elevation have a primary front entrance. We also noticed in that review that metal roofing was not allowed, and metal roofing is a fairly typical and common roof type. It can be very high quality, and we think that that's a perfectly reasonable material, so we also added that in as part of this proposed amendment. And currently, the types of manufactured homes are permitted in R140 single-family residential, R2F two-family residential, RMF multifamily residential, and RRB residential business. So it's a significant portion of the land area in the city of Sandusky for single-family homes where these home types are allowed.
Is that it, Ms. Blair?
Thank you.
We'll entertain questions from the public regarding this public hearing. We'll entertain questions from the commission regarding this public hearing. Ms. Blair, I appreciate your efforts on this. You only have to look at that bottom right quadrant to realize how inappropriate that look is. To me, it looks like someone took a double wide and left it parked on a lot, and I think this legislation cures that, and I'm certainly in favor of anything that is economically feasible to add housing to our community, and I think this is really a step in the right direction. We are embracing that idea through our Homes for Ohio program that Ms. Gilson is fostering, and you have a role in also. So this is certainly a step in the right direction. Thanks for doing this.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'd simply add that, you know, manufacturing housing has taken a bad rap over the years because it wasn't always very good, and the transformation and the quality of manufactured housing has really been amazing, and we're all looking at the unaffordability of home construction today, and it's going to just go up as a result of the tariffs that we've seen put in place recently. So I think this is a sensible modification. I think that as I, as I looked at the minutes of the Planning Commission, I think there was a little bit of concern that, you know, we wanted to get this perfect instead of making this step forward, which was a good step forward. I submit that over the course of the next number of years, there are going to be lots of modifications made to this particular chapter of our ordinances because I think we're all going to learn as we move along. So I think these are good changes, and thank you and the Planning Commission for bringing them forward.
Mr. Bajali, it sounds like you have something to say.
Mr. Chairman, my only comment would be, I agree with Mr. Murray and his comments that he made, and I would also say that I would applaud Ms. Blair for getting in front of this because the one thing I do agree with is we're going to see a lot more of this housing in the future.
Ms. Blair, you're excused.
Thank you, sir.
Our last public hearing regarding the CDBG action plan for fiscal year 2025, and that's going to be conducted by our CDBG Administrator, Nicole Roy.
Sam.
And once again, as a public hearing, we'll entertain questions from the public and from the commission.
Thank you. All right, tonight I'm going to talk about the Community Development Block Grant. Just try to keep it brief. The city is an entitlement community, which means that we get funds directly through HUD, which is the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and there are certain things we can do with that. We have to benefit low-to-moderate income families, aid in the prevention of slight of, I'm sorry, the elimination of slum and blight, or reach a community urgent need due to disaster. So the 2025 CDBG program year is June 30, 2025 to 2026, July 1, 2026. The city anticipates an allocation of approximately $708,428. Under the grant, there are certain requirements that certain categories cannot go above certain caps. There is 70% or more that must benefit LMI households, so under that calculation, it'd be around $495,000. 20% max can be budgeted into program administration, so a maximum of $141,000 approximately, and 15% can be budgeted into public service with a maximum of around $106,000. Briefly, here's our timeline for our public participation schedule. Tonight is the first public hearing. There will be a draft of the plan opened up on March 15, and that'll be a 30-day review for public comments. There is a CPAC meeting scheduled for March 25, and then on April 15, public comment period ends, and then we will re-entertain a second public hearing here on April 28, and then hopefully we will wrap up the action plan by May 12. I know this is a little small, so I'll read it out. This is the proposed draft budget for this year, the $708,428. There are five categories, and the main categories are program administration and planning, and under that there is, of course, the administration, and then a fair housing consultant, and it was proposed that $95,000 cover administration and that $9,500 cover the fair housing consultant. The next category is public facilities and improvements. Under public works, it's generally road surfacing. There was $265,000 proposed for that, and then community development or public space improvements, there's around $65,000 for that. The next category is code enforcement, code enforcement in eligible areas. That was proposed at $60,000. The next category is public services, and those will be subrecipients, which the applications are open now, and the timeline is for tomorrow that they're due. That is for $55,000, and then there's also youth programming that is covered under that proposed for $50,000. And then the last category is rehabilitation. Under that, there's lead paint removal program, and that is proposed at $84,000, and then a healthy homes program, which is proposed at $25,000. And that is it.
Comments from the public regarding this public meeting? Comments from the commission regarding this presentation?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
So we've been reading about a lot of programs that are expected to be cut, and I see mixed reports in the media about whether CDBG is going to be eliminated or cut. Just wondering if you have any information about that, and as you address that, if you could talk about, you know, you have indicated in your presentation what we expect funding will be, all of the things being equal, but maybe you could talk a little bit, to us a little bit, about if the funding is cut by, say, 25% or whatever the number is, how do we recalibrate and do we have that, do we have that information? What's the, what's the matchup between when we receive that information, when we receive the money, and when we spend the money?
Sure. So generally, we don't find out our allocation until May or June, and if it does change in percentage-wise, we'll, of course, have to reevaluate everything, and I'm assuming if it is like a 25% cut, we would literally just take 25% off the budget, but that is to be seen if that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
On the street resurfacing?
Mm-hmm.
How does that process work? Do you get a recommendation from the engineering department on what streets they would like to see done, or how does that work?
Yes, the Public Works Department gives me a recommendation off of, I believe they have an inventory of roads that need repaired, so we have to make sure they're in eligible areas, but that's how we get the roads for that.
Okay, and if there was a road that you felt maybe deserved to be paved, you come to your first public hearing or your first session in March, you would make that known at that point in time?
Generally, I don't have those in front of me, but I can get them.
March, the session on March 25, I was talking.
Oh, yeah, we can have it by then, for sure. I thought you were talking about today.
And one last thing, what time are those meetings going to be, the one in March?
Sure. The CPAC meeting on the 25th, that's going to be at 10 o'clock.
Okay.
And then the public.
And that'll be here?
Yes, and the public comment is just, you can do it however you'd like. You can write it or email it or anything like that. And then the second public hearing is going to be at 5 o'clock, around 5 o'clock. It'll be at another city commission meeting on the 28th of April.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Vargo.
Hi, Nicole. Quick question. Number one, the public administration.
Yes.
Can you give a little bit more background behind that number, that $95,000? Is that, is that one person? Is that?
No, that's multiple people.
Okay.
Yeah, that's usually, it helps pay for finance, it helps pay for all different parts of the administration on the program.
Okay, and then we can get a breakdown on that eventually when you, if that funding works out that way?
Yes, if you, if you want one.
Thank you.
Mr. Gray, the bulk of that money, more than a third of it is going into streets and resurfacing, and then $50,000 or so is going into youth activities. I commend you for that. I think when you're putting money in the neighborhoods and in the streets, it really does positively impact every resident in this community, even if it's not their own street, they're going to travel down that street or some street. So it really, I think your choices have been good on those things, and I, I know how much you enjoy making this presentation. I only, I'll bet you wish you could be as brief as Ms. Blair.
It's the highlight of my evening, sir.
We look forward to you returning.
All right.
Time and time again.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
Just a kind of a mechanics of the program question. Is this CDBG, do, do we receive the money first, or do we expend the funds from our, say, general fund and then get reimbursed?
So it's a reimbursement basis.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Murray.
You're finished? Yeah. Okay. Hats off to engineering for the street grading system that we've used. There was a time where we would bicker at this table about which streets were going to be resurfaced. Fortunately, that has been de-politicized, it's been decommissionerized, or however you want to call it, and we have, we've had a, we've had a objective criteria that we have, we have objective criteria that we've used for many, many years, pushing 20 years now, that guides where we're going to spend the money, and I'm grateful for that, and I'm glad you're following that. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from the public or from the commission? If not, I'll declare this public hearing closed also. Thank you, Ms. Gray. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda comments, and limit your comments to three minutes if you can.
I can. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Sandusky. I have five items on the consent agenda. Item A is the liquor license from Margaritaville to a new downtown Sandusky bar in Washington Row. When I saw this on the agenda today, I did get ahold of someone from the new business in Margaritaville, and they had no idea that there was going to be a transfer from Margaritaville to this new restaurant downtown, so I don't know if they're under a different liquor license, Margaritaville, or if this is something that needs to be, you know, held for a different meeting. Item B, C, D, and E, and those are priority use agreements for the use of our ball fields for various baseball clubs, and I'm just wondering if, in the past, if they're not using those parks, the public was able to use those parks, and I'm wondering if that's still the same this year in 2025. Item H is the purchase of property, I'm sorry, no, item H is the purchase of software using water and sewer funds to purchase that software, and I'm wondering if that's the only department that uses that software, or can we find a way to spread that expense out through several different departments instead of taking our water and sewer increases the last few years and using it, using that just for software purchases? That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Additional comments from the public on agenda items? Commissioners, yeah, before you, several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion accepted?
It's all moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, the motion will be approved, hearing no objection, that motion's approved. Ms. Myers, would you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, liquor license transfer, Karabkin Hospitality Group LLC. Item B, approval of Ambet Sprowfield's priority use agreement with Ambet's Baseball. Item C, approval of J.C. Park South Priority Use Agreement with Sandusky Travelers Baseball. Item D, approval of Dorn Park Priority Use Agreement with Lady Lightning Softball. Item E, approval of Kiwanis Field Priority Use Agreement with Panther Baseball. Item F, approval of zone map amendment for 1706 Hayes Ave. Item G, approval of zone map amendment east of Ferndale Drive and Cold Creek Boulevard. Item H, approval of annual support fee payment to Software Solutions. Item I, approval of Battery Park's submerged land lease payment to ODNR. Item J, approval of Ferndale Drive Extension Project PSA with OHM Advisors. Item K, approval of 2025 Property Inventory and Conditional Assessment PSA with Western Reserve Land Conservancy. Item L, approval of Sandusky Fire Department Promotional Testing PSA with Clancy and Associates.
I think we got them all, Ms. Myers. Commissioners, having heard these ordinances, liquor license hearing, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for passage of the motion, and then for all of the ordinances as indicated, whether under Section 14 or 13, consistent with our city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just to briefly address a couple of the items that came up, I'm fairly confident that a liquor license cannot be transferred without the consent of the owner, but in all events, even if Star Chef Benny Byington were in front of us complaining about that tonight, there isn't anything that we could, that we could do about it because it would not be one of the bases on which we are permitted to make an objection. Priority use agreements are, are just for priority, the public remains free to use those parks, those ball fields when they're not in use, and on item H, I would simply note that that is just $23,000 of the $47,000 that's picked up by Water and Sewer, excuse me, it's $23,000 by the general fund, and then $11,700 by the Water and Sewer Fund. So it is being shared by all of the departments roughly proportionate to the number of employees that that supports.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I, and this is strictly a guess, but reaching out to the, to the establishment and asking someone over the phone whether they know about a liquor license transfer is probably not a real thorough way of finding that out. That liquor license may or may not be held by the person answering that phone. It may be a tenant, maybe, maybe the cook, it may be the guy cleaning the floors. So I, and again, I agree with Mr. Murray. We have so little say in these liquor license proceedings. We're not approving liquor licenses, we're simply declining, or we're simply making a statement that we don't need a hearing for this, so our hands are, both hands, I think, are tied behind our back in these issues.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
To your point, nothing that we do here on liquor licenses actually affects the transfer or doesn't affect the transfer, we can, we can object, and then that, that, I believe, goes on to Columbus for, you know, their consideration, but.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wattington.
Yes.
And now on the liquor license hearing and the ordinances.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wattington.
Yes.
That liquor license hearing and ordinances are approved. Ms. Myers, you present item number one, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract of purchase and sale with Norfolk Southern Railway Company for the acquisition of property identified as parcels number 57-90114 and 59-90074, and a portion of railroad right-of-way, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wattington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, I think you may have some slides for us to look at so we know which, which of the three properties we're, we're acting on tonight?
Yes, so on the screen, you'll see the route for the Sandusky Bay pathway, and it was a little hard to understand exactly what's going on in these, but we are acquiring three separate parcels, two of which we need for the pathway, and one was a property that, after looking at records, we were under the impression it was right-of-way and that we had acquired it previously, but we did not find anything to validate that. So what you'll see on the screen now on the top right, there's a property on First Street right in front of the former Apex Building, and that was right-of-way, that was formerly railroad, and we are going to be looking to run the pathway right through that portion of the First Street. A little bit farther south from that, between Third and Fifth, is where the driveway, that eastern driveway from the school comes out. Like I said, we thought that was right-of-way, but it turns out that we were never actually given that property, so when the railroad was going through this, they said, we'll only give you the other two if you take this one off our hands. And then, so you'll, you see kind of a street view of those parcels that we will be obtaining, that one on the south between Third and Fifth, once we get that, we will dedicate that as right-of-way, of course, because that's what the intent of that is. On the western end of the city, just east of the Monroe Railroad Crossing and just south of the coal docks, you'll see a property, the West Side Sports Center is partially on this parcel. That is, there's kind of an alley between that building, and you can see it kind of at an angle through there. It's a little bit overgrown right now, but that's where the, the bike path is supposed to go through. On either side of that, we might be able to have a unique feature of string lights and maybe artwork and different things like that through there, and that's where we're going to be connecting between Sloan and Monroe to kind of cut off that corner there and have not as sharp of an angle, but also allow the property owner on the south to have parking. So these three parcels, as if we can acquire these, this parcel here that you're seeing on the screen, this is the second to last parcel on the west end. The last parcel that we have is with the Sandusky Harbor Marina, which we've already received approval from this commission, but then their attorneys are taking a second look at it, hoping to bring that back soon, and then we'll have every parcel between the current TOFs and then the current terminus on Mills, so then we'll be able to construct that portion of the pathway once we finalize all the funding for it. So that's what I have on these three.
Mr. Klein, I wonder if you can share with us the length of time it's taken you to get to this position, and I don't think you measure it in months, I think we measure it in years dealing with the railroad, don't we?
Yes, this, these parcels, we're still working through the design across the railroads, but the parcels have taken probably four or five years to maneuver through. We actually started the acquisition process in 2019, hit a lull in 2020, 21, and then picked it back up in '21, so it's been four years that we've been trying to get these, and we've had some good, good conversations back and forth, and we've got some good surveyors and we've had some good, good conversations back and forth, and we've got some good surveyors that we've been working with to make sure that we have all our documents in line to appease the railroad. One more thing I would like to note, there is a building on this property that you can see on the screen. We intend to do a lot split after acquisition. That way we can split out the portion that the pathway is on, and then come back to the commission and with all the appropriate documentation for that, and then figure out what to do with that building as we move forward, the property that the building's on.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Thanks for staying the course over that length of time. Comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Klein, I'll just take this opportunity to highlight how long we've been working on the Sandusky Bay Pathway. And the original plans were drawn up shortly after the year 2000, when I don't really remember now, but it's been a very long time that we've worked on this. I was first elected to the commission in 2006. There were plans already in place that we were working on at that point in time, and so when we look at the Arthur Street, the section, we call it Arthur Street, it's been dedicated as Arthur Street, but apparently we lost, as you indicated, some control over at some point, at some point in time. But when we look at that, I think it's important to mention that as part of the very long-term plans for Sandusky Bay Pathway, and this will be up to many future commissions to, to fund this if they so choose, but as part of the very long-term plans, we've looked at the possibility of having a spur, if you will, that runs from the First Street bike path, the main Sandusky Bay Pathway, deep into the community. We can take that, we, we have the ability to take that pathway all the way to Columbus Ave through a circuitous route, but I think once the public gets a feel for how wonderful the bike path's going to be and how much they're going to use it, I think people will really want that, and they'll realize that's going to increase property values all the way along that pathway. So that'll be for others to consider, but I'm, I'm glad you're picking up that now because although the railroad has said, we don't want to sell you the rest unless you take this too, this is something we really want long-term, so thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Burgo.
Mr. Klein, I just had a question. I saw some questions about this earlier today. The 44,700 that's being paid with the sewer funds, and it says it's needed for the two existing sewers, so what actually needs to be done with those sewers that, that that money is going to be utilized for?
So that right-of-way that goes through, well, right-of-way, the railroad right-of-way that we'd be acquiring between Third and Fifth Street, that sewer actually relieves all the neighborhood to the south of Fifth. There's two sewers that run through there. One is a large trunk sewer. In fact, all of the 48th and 50th neighborhood also goes down and around and up through that sewer, so we need to make sure that we have that sewer existing, and we need to maintain that. So we're not looking to do any work on it, but we need that right-of-way, we need that property, and we need to make sure that we're owning that property, and because we have that infrastructure already existing in there.
In other words, Mr. Klein, we have a sewer on someone else's property at this point in time?
Yes, sir.
Not good. Additional comments, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed appropriating property interest described as parcel 4T and now owned by Majerick LLC for the purposes of making or repairing roads which are open to the public without charge, authorizing the appropriation of funds for deposit with the clerk of courts, authorizing the city law director and/or his designee to file a complaint for temporary appropriation in the Court of Common Pleas, Erie County, Ohio, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I move for adoption of this ordinance under Item 2, under suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Klein, a painful process to acquire $350, $340 worth of property, isn't it? But, but necessary.
It's, it's a very, very, very tedious process, and I will give some kudos to Megan Stuckey who decided, and I apologize, that she decided to forego going through outside attorney to make sure that she could figure out a way to do this on her own so that we weren't spending large sums of money to pay somebody $340. So she was able to do all the documentation herself and, and get it with the law department and make sure that everything is, is being done on the up and up, and ODOT is okay with it, so hopefully we, this is the last property that we actually need to get some easements for to be able to build the sidewalk through there and finish that project off.
And my understanding is this particular property owner just plain has not responded?
I'll say, yes. We have reached out several times. Somebody that claims to be the property owner started signing documents, and that was not the right person, so we have been trying to get in touch with the company that's out west somewhere, and they won't respond, so we just are appropriating the funds and we're going to move forward.
Yeah, great, thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Joe.
Did, did I read this right, that this is just a temporary easement? And it's just so we can work on the project itself, right?
Yes.
Okay.
This simply allows our project to move forward, and then we'll settle with them if they ever show up, we'll settle with them later on?
Yes.
Got it. Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion, please?
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed tennis courts project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation, relation thereto, and declaring this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I move for adoption of this resolution under Item 3, under suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I brought this up when I met with Mr. Orzak on Friday. I'm excited to see the tennis courts going there, but that'll be like standalone on that property because we don't have an indication, we're doing the rec center, it could be two, three, could be four years out. You know, none of us have a clue when that's going to be done. I'm worried about the safety, lighting and that, and, you know, for families to come because they're going to use it in the fall, correct?
Yes. Okay. I think, I think fall, I think fall is summer fall, correct, Mr. Klein?
Yes, the intent is to have it open for the girls' season, which starts typically practice starts late July or early August. I know the rec department has reached out to the schools and said, hey, look, we're not going to have lighting this year for the season, and they said that was okay. I understand that that creates a different dilemma for the public who want to use it when they're not having those matches, but we will be hopefully being able to put that lighting in in the future as part of the design-build project.
And irregardless of whether we get bids that allow us to go forward, the rec center, the lighting certainly would not come on the front end of that anyway, it would come perhaps in the middle or the back end of it, would it not?
Yes, that was the other thing, is we didn't want to light up the tennis courts and do that full design of the tennis courts and then hand that design over to a design-build contractor to try to work it together with the tennis court lighting, and it was just to create a good long-term project that was going to be sustainable and look right and be constructed right. We wanted to make sure that the lighting was uniform throughout the whole project, and it was done with, with an entire site development in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. The point I think that's worth making, Mr. Orzak, is that the tennis courts are about $800,000. The city's ended this for a little over 300, is 3.5 or 3.10, is that not correct?
That's correct, and we work with the schools, they, their tennis courts are in, you know, pretty good need to get repaired, and so we want to get this project done for, for them. It's been a few years in the discussion phase.
Our city schools and the Sandusky Education Foundation are really bearing the, the brunt of, of this cost.
Correct, yeah.
Excellent. Good buy for us. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Joe.
I would like to give a shout out to Thor Works for their $30,000 in the court coding system that they donated to this project. I think that's great, so we appreciate it.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving and adopting the 2025 Five-Year Capital Plan, Capital Improvement Plan for the city of Sandusky, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Joe.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Chairman. Mr. Murray.
Seems to have fallen on me for the last number of years to, to make this comment, which Mr. Klein has bolded and italicized, but, and in, in the communication, which is important, but what we are doing here is we are approving a very high-level plan, and what we are really doing most importantly is we're learning from the staff what the plans are that they have to implement, the strategic plans that the city has adopted over recent years. This really is where the rubber meets the road, and so it's a way for us and the public to understand what the concept is in terms of how we're going to move forward, understanding that each and every project will come back before this and future commissions for approval and for funding. This does not put anything in stone, it does not commit us to anything, but it's, it's more or less a shared vision of how it is that our plans, hopes, desires, dreams for the community actually come about in the sequence in which they come about, and how it is that they'll be funded. So I, I thank Mr. Klein and all of the departments who were heavily involved in this work. It is a big lift, but we've been doing this for a number of years. We had, we had a period in COVID where we couldn't do it. We've been doing this for a long time. We are very fortunate as a community to have a capital budget. Many, many communities, most communities our size, don't have anything close to this because they don't have the stability of the planning and the execution and a vision for how they, how they all get financed. So this is a, a great benefit to the, to the citizens of the city of Sandusky, and I thank all who are involved in it.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio for the Market and Warren Street Recon Project, PID number 120692, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Klein, this is, this is the piece of work that we are the beneficiary of, of a grant, are we not? Can you explain how that offset some of our costs?
Yes, this was a grant that was obtained from ODOT, Jobs and Commerce, GSP, NICO over at GSP worked with them to get some funding because Mack Iron was looking to add a line, and that line was going to cause more trucking, more shipping, and when that happens, Job and Commerce wants to get involved and say, hey, this is going to improve the economy, so we'll put in some funds. So of the $140,000 project, they're putting in $50,000 to make ends meet. What you'll see, I know we got some comments last year on market why we didn't go all the way to MEGs, it was because we were waiting for this project to happen, so you'll see some turning radii being redone, being widened a little bit. We worked with Mack Iron to make sure that their truck routes were a little bit more uniform rather than just all coming from any direction, and they actually have shipping docks on all four sides of the building. We're going to try to reduce that to, to two main ones, and they've been working with us very well to, to try to coordinate that. One of the unfortunate things is that the funding on this project, the timing of this and the timing of the East Water Street project, the funding, we were trying our hardest to get it to work out. That curb on the southwest corner of MEGs and East Water, that's a pretty tight radius there right now, that's not going to accommodate the trucks for Mack Iron, the new trucks, the longer trucks that they're going to be bringing in, so what we're going to do is we're going to pull that back a little bit and put a rolled curb. It's already designed for trucks to go up over them, which we don't like to tell the truck drivers because they like doing that anyway, but it's going to be pulled back a little bit more to make it more evident that it is for trucks.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with OHM Advisors of Perrysburg, Ohio for the West Monroe Street Resurfacing Project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman. I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the city.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Ms. Myers, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven, ordinance number one of that.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a construction agreement with April Mingus for the construction of public improvements related to the development of Mingus Meadows subdivision in the City of Sandusky, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of item seven, number one, ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Guess the important point in this piece of legislation is that the city is going to be made whole by the developer, by these cost. That is my understanding, and that's how I read the document. Is that correct? Ms. Blair?
Yeah, she shook her head.
She shook her head, yes. Goodbye me. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you poll the Commissioner on ordinance number one of item number seven.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Ordinance number one of item number seven is passed. Ms. Myers, you present ordinance number two of item number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed accepting and approving the final plat for the Mingus Meadows subdivision in the City of Sandusky located on a portion of parcel 60-00261 east of Ferndale Drive and Cold Creek Boulevard with a total acre area of 3.2388 acres, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for adoption of this ordinance, the second ordinance, under item seven, under suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. I think I am, and I think we all are thrilled with the concept that a developer, the Minguses in this case, are willing to take on a project like this and add housing to our community. I am old enough to remember years going by when a home was not built in the City of Sandusky. That is no longer the case, and it's my hope that they move forward expeditiously with this and are as successful as they can possibly be with it. So thank you to them for taking this on. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that ordinance, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code, Title V Additional Zoning Requirements, Chapter 1147 Manufactured Homes, Section 1147.02 Design Criteria of the Codified Ordinance in a manner and way specifically set forth here and below, and declaring this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
That passes under Section 13 of the City Charter. Ms. Myers, will you present item number nine, please?
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed amenities at Ambetson Sprawl Parks Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for adoption of this resolution under item nine, under suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commissioner on that resolution. Motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present our last item, item number 10.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase and installation of a new programmable logic controller, PLC, for the irrigation system at Mills Creek Golf Course from Pro Pump and Controls Incorporated of Shelbyville, Kentucky, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Waddington, they're going to be watering the fairways, so I'm going to presume your ball is going to travel a lesser distance.
But the beer's cold.
And the hot dogs are okay.
I'm not going there.
Ms. Myers, you poll the Commissioner on that motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I have a donation of $250 for the K-9 Fund. It was received from the Home Builders Association of Erie County. I get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Got a second?
Yep.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to the home builders.
Quite a few. Sandusky Park and Rec, like to thank Mark and Pat Cook for donating their $5 and change for the Midtown Supper Club tickets. The Friends of the Greenhouse for their donation of two chairs and a table for the Palm Room at the Greenhouse. It's valued at $449. Charles France Family for their donation of a giant dry erase board. Lee's Famous Recipe for providing dinner for the kids in our out-of-school program. Paul Meyer for donating 40 new bike skate helmets. And David Stedman for the $500 donation to the Red Wagon Fund. The donation was given in the name of Lynn Nota Grothwall Stedman and will be deposited in the endowment account. And lastly, Gina Lorenzo McCready for her donation of board games, toys, and musical instruments. Get a motion to accept all those donations.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that's approved. Our thanks to all those generous folks.
Very much. Parks and Rec has applied for the annual bike helmet grant with the Ohio Department of Transportation. If granted, we will be awarded bike helmets, which will be distributed to children and families who participate in Safety Town and/or the Touch a Truck Event. The Sandusky Police Department would like to request permission to apply for the 2025 State Violent Crime Reduction Grant through the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice. There is no local match for any potential award through this grant. The application period is time-sensitive. The proper communication regarding the grant application will be submitted in the future. Get a motion to...
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commissioner on that motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That motion's approved.
Community Development, we are currently soliciting for CDBG projects for our public service allocation. Applications are available on the website at www.cityofsandusky.com/cdbg. And the spring citywide cleanup event will be on Saturday, April 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It will be held at the Shelby Street Boat Launch Overflow Parking Lot. This event is open to all City of Sandusky residents. Photo ID is required. More information will be posted at cityofsandusky.com. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments to the city manager? If not, we'll move to items of old business, any items of old business, Commissioners? Items of new business, any items of new business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Need to move to establish or set up a executive session regarding collective bargaining.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commissioner on that motion.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That executive session is set. Mr. Crable.
I would move that we have an executive session on the sale or purchase of real estate.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. I've had discussions with our city manager on more than one occasion this last week regarding this specific issue. And Mr. Orzak, can you tell me, have there been any movements since the last executive session that we had regarding this real estate purchase project?
We haven't had any communication at this point.
So nothing has transpired since that point in time?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Blair.
I would say what's transpired are more conversations that everyone is trying to get all on the same page, and I think that's why Mr. Crable is asking for that.
Yes. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the Commissioner on that motion.
Mr. Brady.
No.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
That executive session is set. Any additional items of new business? Additional items of new business, we will turn to our executive session. Public comment first, yes. We'll have public comment.
Yeah.
Melvin Smith, 4707 Venice Road. Our school classroom guard is a quarter of Buchanan and Hayes. People are flying through the school zone. They need to do something about it. Or somebody's going to get hit and get killed. I think we need a cruiser out here.
We have our chief of police, and I think he's hearing your comment also. I will leave that up to our police department.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Additional public comment on any item that pertains to city business.
You always say the third time's the charm, so here we are. I would like to suggest, and I've talked about this before, with 22,000 followers on the city's Facebook page, it would be nice if we could get that five-year capital plan on that as well. I'm going to get with the IT guy or the city manager's public announce person and see how many hits we actually have on the city's website. I have to think it's probably not as many as we have on the city's Facebook page. Okay, so it'd be nice, Mr. Orzak, if we can get that on the Facebook page, the five-year plan. I'm going to take you back a few years ago, probably more than 12 years ago, probably before Mr. Murray and Mr. Brady were on the commission, when we had the five-year capital plan, which we haven't had a capital plan in a number of years. That capital plan was actually put up on that screen so that anybody watching this meeting, we were able to see it instead of relying on going to the city's website to see it. Maybe in the future, maybe five years from now, we can do that. The other thing is, Mr. Brady, I can assure you that when I called Margaritaville, I did not talk to the janitor. Okay? I spoke with somebody in upper management. I'm still waiting for a call back from the head chef there. Okay, and as soon as I get that call back, I would advise him that he needs to get a hold of the owners of the property and find out if that is going to impact his ability to sell my favorite margarita. Thank you very much. And it was refreshing to see somebody other than the president make a motion for an executive session. I had that marked down on my calendar. Thank you.
Mr. Schwager, just for clarification, I don't believe that the president ever makes a motion for an executive session. I believe that...
You asked for a motion.
Oftentimes, the role of the vice president.
You asked for... Somebody asked for a motion, either the president or the vice president, but this time, nobody asked for that.
But any commissioner has the ability and the authority.
And it's the first time in a long time, is what I'm saying. It's the first time in a long time, and that's refreshing.
Thank you, Mr. Schwager. Additional public comments on any item that pertains to city business.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Stephanie King. Most of these guys know me from the school board, but I am actually an employee at Second Harvest Food Bank. And by now, you should have all received your invitation to our poverty simulation that we're holding. And so I have come here to personally invite you on behalf of over 6,000 of your constituents who currently live at or below the poverty level. So every day, we get emails about stuff that's happening at the federal government and SNAP, which is my job. You know, it's... Who knows what could happen? So with over the 16 partners, agencies that we work with, last year, we donated 2.6 million pounds of food just to Erie County. And that doesn't include the three other pan... And we currently have 12% of our neighbors in Erie County that receive SNAP, that equals about 8%. But that's more than the population of Huron County, Berlin Heights, and Mylarl, I'll put together. I understand this is Nuski City, but it's... It could be very scary here if things don't work out. So I would really, really love for you guys to come spend a morning with us. It's three hours. You spend 15 minutes, equals one week, of what it's like to live in somebody who has to choose between food and their medications, how they're gonna get to work, what happens if the bank's closed and you can't cash your check, that kind of thing. So it's one week, or 15 minutes represents one week. So on behalf of a quarter of your constituents, I would greatly appreciate seeing somebody there. No pressure. No, actually, I am pressuring you, because I'll keep coming back.
Thank you. Thanks for the invitation.
And I have invited... Can I pass them out, or should I just... Because I know you got emails and other stuff too.
Yeah, you can pass them out.
About SNAP and what Second Harvest does. You want to just pass them for me?
Yes.
Thanks. I don't know. I only did 10, I think. I didn't know there'd be so many people here.
Thank you. Additional public comments on any item pertaining to city business. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we will adjourn to our executive session.
Here upstairs.
I think we can do it here, if you can shut this off.
I think they're already separated, you know what I'm saying?
You want to just stay here?
Take the next one.
We've returned from executive session at 6:41. And are there any motions at the table?
A motion to get out of executive session. You have to vote.
I need a motion to get out of executive session.
Some would move second.
A motion and a second discussion. Mr. Hastings, will you call the rule on that motion?
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yep.
Yes.